Hello, I'm Lesley Cullen, Voter Service Chair of the League of Women Voters of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. And on behalf of the League, I am pleased to welcome you to this candidate forum sponsored by the League in partnership with the City of Murfreesboro. The League believes that candidate forums provide an excellent opportunity for voters to become more familiar with the candidates and their positions. We appreciate the support from Murfreesboro City Government provided by Alan Boesman and his staff. They enable broadcasting and streaming of our forums to reach a large number of voters. The League seeks to conduct our forums in a nonpartisan manner. Key participants, especially the moderator, are not publicly aligned with any candidate. In the upcoming Murfreesboro City Elections, you will be voting for important positions in city government such as Murfreesboro City School Board and Murfreesboro City Council. Early voting started July 13th and runs through July 28th. In a process that's new this year and implemented by the Rutherford County Election Commission to increase voter convenience on Election Day itself, that's August 2nd, you will be able to vote at any one of the voting centers located throughout Rutherford County. To learn which voting location will be best for you on Election Day, visit the Rutherford County Election Commission at www.ruco.vote. We thank you for your attention as you hear these candidates introduce themselves and answer questions about permanent issues facing our city. We hope you find this forum useful in deciding which candidates you choose to support. Remember, your vote gives you a prime opportunity to influence how government is conducted in Murfreesboro. Please make your decision known by voting. Thank you for joining us, and remember, your vote counts.
My name is Stacy Graham, and I will serve as moderator for this candidate forum. This forum is cosponsored by the League of Women Voters of Murfreesboro, Rutherford County, and Murfreesboro City TV, and the Murfreesboro City Cable Commission. The League believes that candidate forums provide an excellent way for voters to become more familiar with the candidates and their positions. It is my pleasure to welcome both our audience here at City Hall and our viewers at home to this program. This evening, we will be hearing remarks from the candidates for Murfreesboro City School Board General Election. Before introducing the candidates, I would like to outline the procedure for the forum. Each candidate will be asked to make an opening statement in a two-minute period. When all candidates have completed the opening statement, then several additional questions will be asked. The candidates will respond to each of those questions with a one-minute answer. The candidates will be allowed two minutes to answer the last question and make any closing remarks. I will begin by introducing each candidate. I want to thank each of them for their gracious acceptance of our invitation to participate in this event. Speaking first will be Ms. Roseanne Barton, then Mr. Kevin Fisher, then Ms. Becky Goff, then Mr. Phil King, then Ms. Amanda Moore. Ms. Barton, you may make your opening statement. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you so much, League of Women Voters, for hosting this forum. A great way for voters to get to know the candidates and what they believe in and how they think they can help the City of Murfreesboro. My name is Roseanne Hughes Barton. I was born here and went to schools here, product of all the school systems here. And I have dedicated my entire career to education with the Murfreesboro City School System. I was a teacher for 15 years and then a principal for 17 years. So I feel as if I have a perspective as a school board member that nobody else would have. As long as I've been connected with the school system for 32 years, I do not know of a school board member that's ever been a former principal as well as a former teacher. And I think that would be vital information that I could share and logistics of how things work or cannot work. So I think that would be one thing that I could definitely bring. My knowledge and expertise about education, not even just about the way things run, but how education affects our entire community and how it affects the children, how what we do as school board members affect them. Finally, my passion for the system. As I said, I've dedicated my entire career to this system. I love the Murfreesboro City School System, and I want it to succeed. I want it to continue to flourish. I want it to improve. There are so many things that we can do, I think, as we get closer to this next school being built. And I'm just excited to be able to possibly give back to a community that's given me quite a bit. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
Good evening, and I also want to thank the League of Women Voters for this tremendous opportunity, and good evening to everyone here. My name is Kevin Fisher. I'm a single parent who raised a son on his own. I graduated from Tureka Nazarene University where I majored in Human Relations. I'm a 20-year veteran of law enforcement. I've worked in the correctional detention setting. I've also worked with juveniles. I've served as a domestic violence counselor at the YWCA Nashville. I've worked in the MTSU mentoring program, and I helped write the program at First Baptist where I attend church. I'm running for the City School Board because I want to ensure that each child has access to a first-rate education in an environment that's safe, nurturing, and conducive to a positive learning experience. I want to thank you all for this tremendous opportunity, and I look forward to having a positive discussion tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Goff?
My name is Becky Goff, and I have been advocating for children all of my adult life. It began when I first graduated college and became a child abuse investigator. I later became a child sex abuse expert witness, testifying in various court cases across middle Tennessee, and serving on numerous boards that impacted the lives of children. I later continued my education, getting my master's degree and my specialist and education degrees. I retired in 2016 from Rutherford County Schools with 25 years of teaching. I've most recently been working with Murfreesboro City Schools on a part-time basis. This has given me the opportunity to work in all 12 schools, including the pre-K off-campus courses, which has allowed me to see what our school district offers from pre-K through 6th grade. I feel that my expertise and my training and my professional background qualifies me to serve on the school board. And I have been advocating for a teacher to be on the school board since we have these positions open up. And I think it's very important that teachers are leading the conversation in education. We have been left out of the conversation in the past and so often, and I think that it's time that a teacher sits on the board. Not that we've not had teachers on the board, and we do have a teacher now on the board, but I would like to have that position sitting on the school board, and I ask for your vote today. Thank you.
Mr. King?
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and those of y'all watching and here tonight. My name is Phil King, and I'm running for reelection to the Murfreesboro City School Board. I'm originally from Philadelphia, Mississippi, graduated from Mississippi State, and when I graduated, moved up here and started my career. I didn't know a soul when I moved here, but I made myself at home. I married my wife Sonia. We have two children. They're both college-age now, but both of my children went to Black Fox Elementary. And that education they got in the city schools laid a firm, solid foundation for the both of them. In my job, I'm in my 24th year with United Parcel Service. I call on business owners. I first call on small business owners, helping them grow their business, and now I call on the large international companies. And one thing I knew four years ago was that good schools attracted good jobs to town. I have learned that that is true with my work with the city council and the state legislators. But the reason Murfreesboro has good schools is we have great teachers. In these four years, I have become a passionate cheerleader for them and the work they do with the students. My wife and I attend St. Mark's Methodist Church. I'm also a member of the Noon Rotary Club, a member of the Cable Commission, and I look forward to another four years here on the City School Board, helping move this district forward. We're one of the best in the state, and I'd like to continue that. Thank you.
Ms. Moore?
Thank you. Thanks again to the League of Women Voters for having this wonderful forum tonight. My name is Amanda Moore, and I have been a parent in city schools for the past eight years. And during that time, I've been a very active parent volunteer at my kid's school. I served in several roles on the PTA Board at their school, and I think that is a very important perspective to have on the school board, and it's a major motivation for me to run for this position. I'm also an attorney, and I've spent my entire legal career in public service. I focus particularly on serving families in poverty. And it's that kind of passion that I would like to bring to the school board. I spend my days looking at laws and policies, making sure that what they're doing is creating opportunities for families and not setting up barriers. And I'd like to do that on the board as well, to make sure that what we're doing is creating opportunities for all the kids in Murfreesboro City Schools. Both my parents were public school teachers. My husband, Jason Vance, is a librarian at MTSU. I went to public schools from kindergarten all the way through college, and then I had the chance to go to law school at Yale. And the reason I could do that is because I got a solid education in a great public school system. And I want to make sure that we keep our public schools strong so that all kids can have those same opportunities. Thank you.
We will now turn to our first question. This question will be answered, starting with Mr. Kevin Fisher. You will have one minute to answer this question. What changes would improve city schools, and how could those changes be implemented?
Well, the first thing that I want to address is the issue of school safety. I believe that we can improve the emergency response plans. I believe that we can. Now that we're going to have school resource officers at each school, I think that we can greatly improve the security at the schools. You know, since Sandy Hook, since Columbas, since the recent incidents in Florida, I think that we're all more aware and more concerned as parents and as members of the community. So I think that one of the things I would like to do is improve the emergency plans. And I'd also like to build upon the school resource officer so that we can put in place a network to, kind of a community policing-type situation where we can foster better relationships between the students and between the school resource officers. I believe that'll help security.
I will repeat the question for each candidate. Ms. Goff, what changes would improve city schools, and how could those changes be implemented?
One of the changes that I would advocate for Murfreesboro City Schools is more funding. We, I think, have suffered a budget cut this year, and we know that achievement gaps are dependent upon funding, and we know how important funding is. So I think that we're going to have to continue to advocate with our state legislature for BEP funding and our city council to get the funding that we need to have the programs that are needed to continue to advance our school. I think we are going to have to work to really recruit and retain the teachers that we have. We are almost at a crisis level within our state and really across the country. So I think that we need to do everything we can to recruit and retain the good, great teachers that we have. I also would like to expand on community schools, not to be mistaken for charter schools. And I'll have to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. King, what changes would improve city schools, and how could those changes be implemented?
First, parent involvement could be better. It's good. For example, when we have open houses for the new school year, they're very well-attended, but it seems that the parental involvement tends to drop off after that. I know we do a very good job of reaching out to students, for example, before school starts. Hobgood Elementary, the teachers and staff do a good job of reaching out. I'd like to see the parent involvement increase. For example, we had a zoning a couple of years ago, and two parents showed up. I would like to have focus groups with the teachers. The board, previously, we've been interested in the, how would the teachers feel? What are they thinking? And I think by holding focus groups with teachers for various things would be a great way to find out how their job is going and things that we could improve upon.
Ms. Moore, what changes would improve city schools, and how could those changes be implemented?
Looking at the whole district, I think one thing that could improve the schools, sort of similar to what Phil King said, is to improve the public perception and public involvement of our whole community in the school system. We're known pretty well as a great school system, and I would like to make sure that we continue to do that. As I've been talking to voters across the city, lots of people say, "Oh, we have a great school system." But some people say, "Well, I don't have kids in school," or, you know, "I just don't really know much about the schools." And I think it's really important that we work as a school board to be ambassadors for Murfreesboro City Schools, so that everyone knows that they do have an interest in the strength and the actions of Murfreesboro City Schools. How we do that? We have some great partnerships now with businesses and churches around town. We need to strengthen those and the great outreach work that we do. We also, as a school board member, need to do our best to get the word out about what the schools are doing.
Ms. Barton, what changes would improve city schools, and how could those changes be implemented?
Well, we've mentioned school safety, and as a former principal and teacher, I can tell you that we look at that every year, all year long. Those plans are revised yearly and based upon the facts of current situations that have happened around the country. I also think that something that would really help our curriculum would be a textbook adoption or a common text to be used amongst all the schools. At this time, language arts, science, and social studies do not have a common text to be used among all 12 schools, and teachers are struggling. And I think children will struggle ultimately because it's harder to come up with all of those activities that are going to adequately teach the standards that are laid forth to us by the state. I also have to agree with Amanda. I would like to see more partnerships with the city, more advertisement maybe. And our PR people do a great job, but it's hard to get all of our activities out there.
We will now turn to our next question. This question will be answered first by Ms. Goff. You will have one minute to answer this question. What is your position regarding standardized testing and evaluations?
My position on standardized testing and evaluations are that they are necessary, but they need to be fair and accurate. Teachers are not opposed to standardized tests as long as they are fair and accurate. We have to have some way of measuring our student growth. Teachers also want to know how they are doing and what changes they need to do and bring to their classroom. So I think that we need to be asking some fundamental questions about our state testing. And I do think that the Department of Education has realized that they have to take action and are making some changes on their own with the testing. I've noticed that most recently, they are cutting back on the length of time that elementary schools are being tested, and they are cutting back on the length of tests that our high school students are having to take the test. So we are getting the attention, and we just need to, as a school board, advocate with our state department.
Mr. King, what is your position regarding standardized testing and evaluations?
I understand the need for standard testing and evaluations, and teachers are not afraid of that at all. However, they ask for one thing, and that's fairness. And as a board, we've asked for accuracy. Another thing as a board we've asked for is timeliness. For example, when the TN Ready test was done, the online system completely failed. We were told in Tennessee the reason was hacking. I read newspapers in other states that learned that this system had an outage. However, the same vendor in different states, as well as Tennessee, the same vendor was used in various states. First, I'd like to see a vendor be able to provide their service with no failures. Also, the results that we get back, they've got to be given back to us in a timely manner to be used in teacher evaluation.
Ms. Moore, what is your position regarding standardized testing and evaluations?
Well, as a parent, I know that it's really wonderful to get some sort of feedback on how your child is progressing in class. Assessment is necessary of some port, of some type. The problem comes when we put too much emphasis on just one test and think that that's one metric that can measure the whole worth of a child or the whole worth of a teacher or a school. I think we have to look beyond just the one test score. I think as a school board, there's only so much we can do about that because a lot of that comes from the state. But we can advocate. We can advocate with our state legislature to let them know we need a test that works. We need a test that measures what the teachers are supposed to be teaching, and we need a test that we get quality results back in a period of time where the teachers can use that to help the children and decide where they need extra assistance.
Ms. Barton, what is your position regarding standardized testing and evaluations?
Well, it's a necessary evil. We have to have them because that's the way we measure how well we're doing with the students that we have. However, and I think it's been said several times, all we have ever asked is that it be fair, that it be consistent, and that it be accurate. And the results not coming back until halfway into the next school year is absolutely ludicrous. I think, too, as a board, it's our responsibility to educate the citizens of Murfreesboro about standardized testing and maybe about some of the downfalls that we see as educators. Again, I think Amanda mentioned the whole child, and I want people to understand that that is such a small part of a child's success, is how well they do on a standardized test. And as long as we can keep that in mind and put standardized testing in a place that has the priority it deserves, rather than being the best and only measure of a child or a teacher or a school's success, then I think we're on the right path.
Mr. Fisher, what is your position regarding standardized testing and evaluations?
I'm not a fan of standardized testing. I think we test too much. My personal opinion is that I think it's unfair that a child will do well on their schoolwork all year long, do well on all of their homework, all of their projects, do well in class, do well on their report card, but then they do poorly on one test, and you're going to reduce their grade by whatever percentage they set. I think that's unfair. I think that it's wrong, in my opinion. I'll just be honest with you. No two children come from the same environment, so it's unfair to say that this child and this child are going to score exactly the same. I think that is just a bad policy. I would set it at, oh, I heard that go. I would set it at roughly 0% to 1%. And as for teachers, I think our teachers do a tremendous job, and I think they should be evaluated in other ways: length of service, commitment to the community. That's my personal opinion.
We will now turn to our next question. This question will be answered first by Mr. King. You will have one minute to answer this question. What can the city school board do to help recruit and retain good teachers?
First, we can, quite frankly, we pay the best here in Murfreesboro City. What we do is we look at what teachers are getting paid in middle Tennessee, and we offer to match that or beat that. Second, what we do here in Murfreesboro City Schools, and frankly, I take great pride in this, and so we offer free health insurance for the teacher themselves. Now, they pay for their spouse or their children, but I want to make sure that that health care for themselves is paid for by the city. I think that's a perfect recruitment tool. One thing we need to do is we need to increase our footprint in attracting good teachers. Other things we can do is give the teacher a good, safe, clean work environment, and then last, give them the support and everything that they need.
Ms. Moore, what can the city school board do to help recruit and retain good teachers?
Well, we are very fortunate here in Murfreesboro that we have a wonderful university right here in town with Middle Tennessee State University that has a great education program. And I know we already have a lot of partnerships where education students at MTSU are integrated into our school system, not just as student teachers, but through special projects that their professors arrange for them to come to the schools. I think that's a great way to recruit teachers. I think the real trick is retention. So once we get the teachers, what do we do to keep them here? Part of that, I think, comes back to this idea of community support and respecting teachers like we once did and supporting them as the real essential piece of our community's future. I also think that within the schools, having mentorships and partnerships with experienced teachers, with new teachers, would help to retain those teachers once they get here and show them the support and the instruction that they need to make sure they feel comfortable and want to stay in the position.
Ms. Barton, what can the city school board do to help recruit and retain good teachers?
I think first, as a school board, it's our responsibility to tout all of the accomplishments of our system and our teachers and why it is a great place to work and to educate your children. I think also the fact that we do give a lot of good support once the teacher is hired is so important. As a first- or second-year teacher, you've got to have the support of your administrator, your central office, your grade level, and other teachers in the school, the community. And you want to feel appreciated. You want to feel like that what you're doing matters. So I think as long as we can make teachers feel like what they do matters, that what they do is appreciated, and that we are here to try to give them all the help, materials, and resources that they need, I'm telling you, that's one reason I've been able to hire teachers in this system, is because they know that. They hear that we are good with that and that our administrators and central office personnel are very helpful.
Mr. Fisher, what can the city school board do to help recruit and retain good teachers?
Well, I think the most important thing that we need to do first and foremost is focus on retaining our teachers. We have tremendous dedicated teachers, and one of the ways that we can recruit other teachers, new teachers, to the area is by showing them how well we treat the teachers that we currently have. We can do that by improving the benefit package, ensuring that it's consistent with other areas, whether it's city, county. You know, we're a progressive, we're a vibrant community, and our payment and how we treat teachers should reflect that. I think that our salaries should be comparable, if not exceeding, other schools in the area, other systems in the area. And I think we need, as I said earlier, we need to reward our teachers for their longevity. You know, teachers that commit to working in this community for an extended period of time, we should reward them for their dedication. Thank you.
Ms. Goff, what can the city school board do to help recruit and retain good teachers?
Well, I agree with what everybody has said here as far as pay. I applaud the school board, the city council for giving the pay, the teachers, the beginning teachers, the pay. I would advocate that we work with our higher institution, education institutions, to train teachers, to have the classrooms that they are going to have rather than the classrooms that they imagine that they're going to have. I also think that focusing on our administrators, administrators have a great deal of effect and influence on keeping teachers. And if I could bottle up the great skills that my former principal had as far as leadership and sell them, we would not have a teacher shortage in Tennessee.
We will now turn to our next question. This question will be answered first by Ms. Moore. You will have one minute to answer this question. It's a long one. What do you see as the role of the city school board in meeting the needs of the increasingly diverse student population that has resulted from the growth of Murfreesboro?
We do have a wonderfully diverse system, and I think that that's a strength of our system. As far as the school board goes, I would like to bring to the school board the perspective that I use in my work all the time. I work on issues of diversity, issues of poverty, and always keeping in mind that sometimes when we think we're doing something that's positive, there's an effect that we don't realize. And I want to make sure that as a school board, we're keeping in mind all of our students, including students that may have challenges that are not readily apparent, students who have differing learning styles, differing learning needs, students whose families may be experiencing economic hardship, students whose families may not speak English at home. And as a school board, we need to keep that diversity at the forefront of our minds to make sure that we aren't unintentionally putting up barriers to those kids' success in our schools.
Ms. Barton, what do you see as the role of the city school board in meeting the needs of the increasingly diverse student population that has resulted from the growth of Murfreesboro?
Again, I have to go back to my experience as an administrator in the system. That was my role. I had to make sure that all of the children in my school, no matter what race, gender, if they did not speak English as a first language, if they had special learning needs, poverty, families in poverty, all of those people, I had to be the one to be sure that our activities and the things that we offered and the things that we tried to help children do were appropriate for all those groups. And again, I think that that perspective of being an administrator in the system and having had to do that for the last 17 years would be very valuable on the school board. Diversity is what makes our schools great. That's why public schools work, is because children need to be with all types of children. And the diversity that we have in our system is fabulous. And I had a large number of English-as-a-second-language students in my last job and totally enjoyed that experience.
Mr. Fisher, what do you see as the role of the city school board in meeting the needs of the increasingly diverse student population that has resulted from the growth of Murfreesboro?
I would like to see the school board focus more on improving I would like to see the school board focus more on improving the environment in the local schools. I would like to see anti-bullying programs. You have a diverse background now in the school system. I would like to see a greater focus on teaching respect for other different groups. And again, I think anti-bullying is an issue which I think needs more attention. We need to address this issue. At First Baptist, we have a program where we talked about anti-bullying, conflict resolution, anger management. This was a program that we designed for our at-risk young people, and I think it's something that the school system needs to do more towards. We can do, I love the idea that Murfreesboro City Schools has a whole-child concept where they address the needs of a child both from an academic perspective, as well as all the needs that a child may have. And I think that by putting programs in place such as anti-bullying, conflict resolution, anger management, in addition to the academic programs we currently have, we can strengthen the city schools and make the schools a better environment for all of our kids.
Ms. Goff, what do you see as the role of the city's school board in meeting the needs of the increasingly diverse student population that has resulted from the growth of Murfreesboro?
I think that the city's school board needs to make sure that we are providing our teachers the resources to address the needs that these students are bringing into the classroom. I know that our district tracks all of the diversity that we have, and we have nine thousand students, we have thirty different languages, and we can only imagine what it is like for a student who doesn't speak the language that we do, that comes from a different country coming into our school system. And we know that students who are being raised in low-poverty populations bring special challenges to the classroom, and our teachers are faced with dealing with these children that are most vulnerable. And we need to make sure that we give them those resources.
Mr. King, what do you see as the role of the city's school board in meeting the needs of the increasingly diverse student population that has resulted from the growth of Murfreesboro?
One of the things we need to continue to do is allow the schools to have their a certain celebration night. For example, Bradley has the Latino night, Black Fox has the Asian night, other schools have other events. I've been to those. They're fantastic little food festivals. And what the role of the board needs to do is encourage these for the general public. Welcome anyone, even if you don't have children in the schools, to come in and witness for yourselves the diversity in each school, and how each school has its own little bit of difference in diversity, if you will. But I think we need to increase the amount of those, but also let the general public know that they're more than welcome to attend.
We will now turn to our next question. This question will be answered first by Ms. Barton. You will have one minute to answer this question. How can the city's school board help lower-performing schools do better?
Well, we're doing that all the time. But basically, what we do when we take the standardized test, and also based upon the scores and grades that they have throughout the year, we identify the learning gaps with children, and then we try to work to fill those gaps. And so that is a lengthy process, and it's a very detailed and complicated process. As long as our teachers all have the knowledge and the ability to do that well and to do that accurately, I think we do continue to make progress with those children. We have so many programs in place that we use for reteaching, for, like I said, filling the gaps that the children need, and some of those resources are more readily available than others. So, we just need to be sure that our teachers have what they need to do it, and that they have the proper training that they need to be able to help children at all levels to be successful and to progress.
Mr. Fisher, how can the city's school board help lower-performing schools do better?
Well, I'm a tremendous fan of the ESP programs at several of the schools. My son went through these programs, and they were extremely beneficial. I'd like to see that program expanded, perhaps provide more resources for these children to help these children do well. I think we can also expand, maybe put in place a program with MTSU to perhaps give credit to the college students to help tutor some of these young people, because I think at the end of the day, we all want our children to succeed. And I think that by expanding these ESP programs, perhaps putting more emphasis on the tutoring, we can ensure that these children's test scores continue to do well.
Ms. Goff, how can the city's school board help lower-performing schools do better?
Okay, we know that most of our lower-performing schools are in our more inner-city, which oftentimes is our higher-poverty areas. So, I think that, once again, we've talked about it earlier, we need to make sure that those teachers have the resources to meet the needs of those students where they are at. My platform, running for Murfreesboro City School Board, is to expand and create more community programs, community schools. And many of you might have driven by Hobgood. They have a community technology center now that has been built, and I think that we need to see more of that. This allows community members to come in and use the technology center, and I think that that's how we can strengthen our communities, strengthen these neighborhoods that have our more lower-poverty students that reside there and come to school.
Mr. King, how can the city's school board help lower-performing schools do better?
One of the many things we could do is, we have academic coaches right now. What that means is if a teacher, a math teacher, needs help, they just simply let the coach know, and the coach comes in and helps them and find ways that they could increase their performance, if you will. Another thing that we do, and I'd like to see us do more of, is sharing best practices among teachers. For example, if a teacher has something that's working very well, I think that it should be posted on the internal website for the city schools, so it's easily and quickly downloaded without a delay in getting that to another teacher. And that way, we can make sure that teachers have access quickly to everything that the others have.
Ms. Moore, how can the city's school board help lower-performing schools do better?
I think that often, lower-performing schools is not the fault of the teachers or the families involved in those schools. We know that when students' basic-level needs are not being met, if they are hungry, if they have a difficult situation at home, they're not going to thrive at school. One thing that we do well in city schools, and as a school board member, I would like to encourage us and support us to continue doing, is outreach services. We have partnerships with businesses, we have partnerships with churches, and they help us meet those basic needs so that we can then work on the academic area. Once we've identified these data that show us that we have a lower-performing school, it's important for us to look at if there are subgroups in particular that need additional help. And if so, we need to make sure that teachers are getting the specialized training that they need to address the particular needs of those subgroups, whether it's a cultural training, whether it's a certain technique to teach a type of child with a particular learning style. We need to make sure teachers are supported to meet those very specific needs.
We will now turn to our last question. This question will be answered first by Mr. Fisher. You will have two minutes to answer this question, along with any closing remarks you'd like to make. So, Mr. Fisher, what do you feel is the most important issue facing Murfreesboro City Schools in the next five years, and how would you address that issue?
Well, we talked earlier about school safety, which I think is important. Another issue, which I think is greatly important, is the tremendous growth that we're experiencing in this facility. Now, next year, we're going to be opening up a new school, and currently, we're getting between two fifty, two hundred and seventy-seven students each year. This means that in about four years, the same school that we just opened will be overcrowded. I think this is an issue that we're going to have to address somewhere down the line, I think, sooner rather than later. So, I think our growth that we have right now is going to be one of the tremendous issues we're going to have to address. I want to take a minute to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. It's always great to talk to constituents about issues that we, as a community, face, and this has been a wonderful opportunity, so thank you for that. When I was little, I wanted to be the first black president. Now, that was virtually unheard of in nineteen seventy-one. But I was very fortunate. I had teachers that believed in me and saw my potential, and told me that if I worked hard, I studied hard, got a good education, that I could be anything in this world I wanted to be. Well, I want to provide that same opportunity for today's young people. I want to help them reach and exceed their goals. I want to help them keep their dreams alive and reach for the highest academic goals that they may set, and I want to see them exceed those. I think we have tremendous schools. I want to help make the schools better. And I want to thank you all for this opportunity, and hope you all have a good night. Thank you.
Ms. Goff, what do you feel is the most important issue facing Murfreesboro City Schools in the next five years, and how would you address that issue?
I think that the most important issue facing Murfreesboro City Schools is our city's growth. Not only the growth here in the city, but in the county, and it affects both city and county. We know that our economic growth goes hand-in-hand with our strong public school system. When industry businesses come here to locate in our city, they're going to look at our strong education system, our interstate, our hospitals. And I think that it's very, very important that we have a vision in place, a strong, a strategic plan that outlines where we're going as a school district, the schools that we're going to need, and that we monitor the population, and then the necessary capital construction that we're probably going to be needing to do in addition to what we're going to be doing over this next year. So, I would say that definitely the growth, I know that's pretty standard in all school districts, but in Murfreesboro City, I think we can pretty much acknowledge that that is, in my opinion, the pressing issue that we are facing. I would like to ask for your vote. I feel like that my experience, my professional background, and my training qualifies me for this position. I do feel like a teacher needs to be on the board, and educators should be listened to. Not that we know everything, but that we do have a good fundamental knowledge and wisdom that we can bring to the table to make decisions that affect our education. Thank you.
Mr. King, what do you feel is the most important issue facing Murfreesboro City Schools in the next five years, and how would you address that issue?
Growth. You've heard it, and you'll hear it again. And this is not just a Murfreesboro City Schools issue. This is a city of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County thing. We're going to open a brand-new school for the coming school year, not this school year, but the next, the one that ends in twenty twenty. If the Murfreesboro City Schools and the city of Murfreesboro continue adding two hundred and fifty students per school year, for example, when we open the new school next year, we're going to need at least twenty-one teachers. That's not counting the cafeteria staff, the bus drivers, and the buses that we'll need, and then everything that goes inside the school. If that growth keeps up, we're going to need another school, the fourteenth school, somewhere here in the city of Murfreesboro, and here we go again, looking for another twenty-something teachers, a new principal, assistant principal, more buses, bus drivers, school cafeteria workers. But growth is good, because the alternative is not good. But that's something that we've done very well, is working with city council, so that there's no surprises for them, that we keep them abreast of that. That's our big challenge. I've enjoyed the past four years. I'll be honest with you, I've had fun. It's been work at times, but I've loved it. I'm very passionate about the teachers. I'm amazed at what they do. If you haven't been in a school, I encourage you just to go and look at what they do. Look at what they do on an average day. And it's like there was a television commercial where Brian Bosworth hears Peyton Manning, "Take Me Back to College." "I wish I could go back to elementary school." I encourage you. Go visit, and I'd appreciate your vote on August second. Thank you.
Ms. Moore, what do you feel is the most important issue facing Murfreesboro City Schools in the next five years, and how would you address that issue?
Well, it's no surprise. I think it's growth. So, many of the issues that we've talked about really come down to the issue of growth and funding, and so what can we do as a board about that? We don't raise taxes. We don't generate funds ourselves. It depends on us having good relationships with our city council, with our legislators, and ultimately, to get their support, we have to have the support of the public. When we set forth a budget, we have to remember that a budget isn't just a line of expenses and receipts. It's a moral document. It's a statement of our values. And we have to make sure that everyone in our community values public education as much as we do, so we can get the funds we need to deal with the growth that we're facing. That's what we can do as a school board. I have been a parent in city schools for the past eight years, and as a parent, I've had the opportunity to be on the PTA and serve in kind of a parent-representative role. It's a role I really enjoyed, being accessible to parents, being accessible to teachers, listening to their concerns. It plays on a lot of the same skills that a lawyer takes, to listen, to take things in confidence, and to help people find solutions. I would like to have that same position on the school board, to be someone people can access, to find approachable, and to talk to. I ask for your vote. We're in early voting now, and on August second. If you need a cheesy way to remember my name, I've got one. Just remember, when you go to vote, you want to choose "more" for city schools. So, got puns and everything. Thank you.
Ms. Barton, what do you feel is the most important issue facing Murfreesboro City Schools in the next five years, and how would you address that issue?
It would be easy if we had just one most important issue. We don't. Growth is certainly an issue, and has been an issue as long as I've been in this system. But there are so many other things that we have to keep on the back burners, or all the burners, as well. We have to make sure that our curriculum stays strong, that our teachers keep the resources and the support that they need, that our students have opportunities to succeed, no matter what barriers they may face. And I think that even though, like I said, we know growth is an issue, all of these things are an issue every day. And as a principal and a teacher, I can tell you that from the outside looking in, I know that growth sounds like it's the most important issue, because it's going to cost the most, I'll be honest. But there are so many things that we do on a daily basis that are just as important, if not more important. And I think that's one of the reasons, again, that I feel like I would be a great choice for this position. I'm used to keeping all those burners going. I know how to do that. And I think as a board member, my experience would just jump to the next level. I'd be able to take what I know and apply it in ways that would help all schools, and not just the one that I happen to be working in. My parents were educators, here in Rutherford County, for thirty-five years. I was a parent also of two city school students for seven years each. And again, like I said, I've been a principal, I've been a teacher. I know this system. I know this system like the back of my hand. I know what it needs to improve, I know what it needs to maintain, and I think I can be the one that will help to do that. I would certainly appreciate your vote on August second. Amanda's right, early voting's already started. We're all out working, polls and waving at people with our shirts on. So, get out there and vote. If I could leave you with one message tonight, please go vote.
Well said. Thank you. Once again, on behalf of the League of Women Voters and the city of Murfreesboro, I want to thank all the candidates for their participation today. I also want to recognize Murfreesboro Communications Director Alan Bozeman and his staff, and the Murfreesboro Cable Commission for their cooperation in presenting this program on Murfreesboro City TV, located on Comcast Channel Three, AT&amp;T Channel Ninety-nine, and on the city website. I also want to encourage all Murfreesboro citizens to vote. Early voting began July thirteenth and goes through July twenty-eighth. Election Day is August second. Please exercise this important right to determine who will be the Murfreesboro City School Board. Remember, your vote counts. May we close with a round of applause for the candidates.